Okay, are we good? Everybody on the board would please turn their mics on and leave them on the entire meeting. That would be great. I'm calling the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have reviewed the agenda and we will proceed as presented, starting with recognition and reports. And I will start by resigning as my role as chair. The vice chair will now take over. Thank you.
I'll read the mission statement. For Equilaca Public Schools, Equilaca Public Schools is a symbol of excellence with state-of-the-art facilities and a customized organization program and opportunities that meet the needs, desires, and needs of each student. The core values of Equilaca Public Schools are communication, leadership, respect, pride, and passion, safe, positive environment, excellence, and accountability in achievement. Is there any public comment? Or sorry, public comment is limited to two minutes for each agenda item. We'll refrain, I want to make sure that everyone refrains from using student names not be stated during the meeting. Everyone in the live stream is to comment to the following email. It's publiccomment@equilaca.net. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Any public comment? Public comment? I've reviewed the agenda and will proceed as presented. First, we have recognition and reports. Is there a student class report from fourth, fifth, and sixth? Somebody want to take the mic?
We have a couple students at most nine, in the fourth grader and a fifth grader. You want to be able to talk about what you're learning in fourth grade? Share a little bit about what we've been doing in the meeting? What we've been practicing? Maybe some of the pictures, maybe the skills we've been practicing? And reading stories? Text teachers? Confidentiality? Do you want to add anything for this thing? Fiction, historical fiction, realistic fiction? What about science? You guys want to add anything for science? Yeah? The properties of matter, how to identify them? Then some labs? Want to talk about math a little bit? Okay, so what have you been learning in math? Fourth grade? Okay? Two-digit by two-digit numbers? Okay, fifth grade? Yep, decimals are new and adding and subtracting decimals. What about social studies? Yep, what about American history? What are we learning this week? The Virginia colony? There we go. Language arts? The boring stuff. Nouns. What kinds of nouns, right? Singular, plural? Spelling, working hard on spelling and writing sentences, complete sentences.
Thank you, guys. The trustee report. Anyone who wants to report on the parade flow?
It was fun. There was a lot of people in the parade this year. It's kind of nice to see the variety of everything.
November 12th is our next regular meeting. And is there any state and federal education? No? So bring in a report, Mr. Captain.
All right, well, first off, thank you. It's always hard to be brave and this is a bigger audience than just your class, but we appreciate you guys coming and sharing what you're doing. Okay, so yay to be brave. And so we have a lot of things coming up. We have reading under the lights. Bounce around a little bit, but reading under the lights is Thursday, October 10th at 5:30. We, Stockman's Bank has officially donated $13,000 to the sound system on the football field. So that will be, we did have it in place for the homecoming game, but our kickoff event with Stockman's Bank will be at that as well. So we're really excited about that. Trustees are serving the meal. We've got library doing dessert. We've got a super fun night. And as much as we need rain, we're going to have one really nice evening, it looks like, on Thursday. Things coming up. The night at the museum is November 4th. It will also be at 5:30, but that's, you know, a little ways away, but that, we're collaborating with the museum, another book giveaway and for a family event. We, our athletics activity fundraiser, and we brought in just a little over $11,000 to our activities fund in that fundraiser. So turned out really, really good. Lots of different students were like, didn't really think we could, we'd make like a couple thousand dollars. So definitely helped us, give us a good solid kind of footing, try to build our athletic program into a little bit more self-sustainable. Homecoming again on that, we had lots of involvement. We met afterwards to talk about just kind of brainstorming, getting the ideas to think about how we can make it better and improve. But it was exciting to see the community involved, the businesses posting pictures, the people at the parade, the game. We got some really good pictures at the game that just kind of highlight all the great things about Black and Carter County, if you will. The gym update, gym is done. They came, redid the floor last week. We could have opened it up today, but we're just going to keep everybody up until next week, just to give it a little bit extra time to dry. So that should be, that was, they came in and fixed that all for us and did a good job of doing that. Fire fundraiser, which seems like forever ago, but to start that process, it was a little over $9,800 that we donated as a school with combination with plenty wood, which turned into essentially $19,000 for that fire relief. And so a good thing for the kids to be part of, a good thing for us all to be part of. Because we just never know when it's going to be us. Chamber of Commerce is having the Christmas stroll December 5th. Working with a couple different donors to provide books for that as well. Our theme in that will be tied to the Polar Express, and we will be with more information to come, but just getting that on everybody's calendar. December 5th is the holiday stroll and businesses and all that are working hard to be a better member of the Chamber of Commerce and kind of build off of that as well. Sound system's on, 28 people, but we're, update three of the, we got 28 people. Last, this last meeting used the, sign up and use the fitness center. 160 different entrances in the first month of using that. So we're seeing a lot of traction in that. We're also seeing a lot of, a fair amount of revenue coming in through that pop machine out there with catering and that. First round of math testing. Is on route in a few weeks. So we'll work through that with our students and then get that information out to parents. And the last thing I have on there is the safety squad rally is on Monday, the 14th. So we have Southeast Electric is bringing their electric trailer in as well as a truck. And they are talking to the kids about safety, but we also have that combined with the fire department, the EMTs, highway patrol, the sheriff's department. The morning part of that will be more focused on safety and letting the littles learn about how to have to deal with different situations from fire safety to electricity and all of those kind of things. The afternoon from 12:30 to 1:45, because Monday is an early release day, is the older, seven through 12, will be going through that with a safety theme, but also a focus on career possibilities for them in our community as well as if they wanted to be a fireman in Miles City or somewhere else and those things. So a lot of good things for our kids. Excited to, I will go back to homecoming. I was excited to see our country schools and our Alzada involved in that. We had one, the safety squad rally. We have two of the country schools coming in as well as the homeschool kids being part of that. So excited about that. We're also invited to the homeschool talent show. So our kids will be taking, will be invited. They will have the choice to participate in that as well. So building a lot of bridges and making a lot of connections for our kids. There's a lot of good things going on.
Guidance. Carol?
Okay, this month's counseling department will focus on promoting student safety across all grade levels. On October, on Wednesday, October 16th, we'll be hosting our first quarter Bark Awards with Breakfast with Besties. So we're going to do that as a joint thing again. You guys are all welcome to come if you would like and check it out. This event will celebrate students who have made significant progress in improving their emotional regulation skills, maintaining, managing their impulsivity, and understanding the difference between smart brain and emotional brain. I wish they wouldn't have left. So we talk about in class how our smart brain's up here, our emotional brain's back here, and sometimes the emotional brain takes over. So we've been really focusing on that. My own son even came home and told me that his emotional brain took over. So something's got to be sinking in. And awards this quarter will be a little more selective. With only a handful of students being recognized, we're really going to hone in on who's really been making some changes, so not everybody might not get an award this year. We also give out a reading award, a math award, and an accelerated, the top 10 accelerated reader. Firth State's testing window for Montana's assessment for student testing, MAST, will open on October 14th. Next week is a short week, we will probably not start testing. Students in grade three through eight will complete four to five math assessments in that window and two reading tests in that window. We have four windows. So, and then kindergarten through 10th grade students have completed their fall math testing. I'm just wrapping up the last few. Our staff will now analyze these results to get some more targeted interventions for students across the board. And then we'll be presenting these to parents on our teacher conferences.
Athletic director? We'll talk about Carol.
Montana High School Association is voting on a realignment statewide. This decision could potentially impact us. Montana High School Association's goal is to have the districts align in volleyball, basketball, and track. We are seeking your opinion as we will be writing a letter to the Montana High School Association to make sure that the southeast corner of Montana is represented in the upcoming vote. In your packets, there should be two options. There's an option one and an option two. We're currently leaning more towards the option one as that would kind of keep us still in the four C. But if you are familiar with like the volleyball schedule, we play circle, we go more north. So we'd be more north-aligned than south-aligned. So it won't really change our districts, it'll be more of a division change. We are leaning more towards one, and I think the state as a whole is leaning more towards one. It was like 92 for one and 8% for two or something. It was pretty vast difference. And then we've added two more C squad volleyball games against Baker. And then our boys, junior high boys played against Baker last Monday. And potentially there'll be a junior varsity football game, but I'm going to guess it'll be canceled because we're just barely getting by with varsity with enough healthy kids. Then the junior high volleyball team will have their tournament at Sacred Heart this weekend, the 11th and the 12th, and that will be in Miles City. And that's only the A team. And then on Monday, junior high basketball starts. And their first game will be on Friday, so that's a super quick turnaround for those kiddos. And that's okay, so we're used to it now, by now. And then meetings have been set up with the junior high coaches to review rules and any other things that are concerns that might arise. So we're going to meet with them next month, tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow.
And we have a parent meeting planned. Parents will be on Monday at 4:00 o'clock, and that will, we'll get that out there.
On the 14th. And the district's six C volleyball team will be playing in Glendale for their districts at DCC on October 31st through the 2nd. And first round of playoffs is scheduled for November 1st and 2nd. We've been really lucky so far this year, things have been running smoothly, and we will continue to just update you on any changes that may arise.
Looking at those two options, is there any that you guys are just completely against? Just so we can, Mike Richards is planning on going, and so we will, I'll probably mail a letter and send one with him as well, but he plans to represent us as a whole and hell, no one they have that many.
And then that third page just kind of breaks it down with the towns a little easier. I think it's on the third page, isn't it, behind there? Okay, yeah.
So with option one, we would be playing the towns that are listed there or with either of those options?
Okay.
If you go to option, if you go to the third page.
If you go to the third page, it'll show us what our, our district is essentially staying the same. Broadus, Equilaca, Jordan.
The division. It's the division that changes.
Now, if we go with option one, is it two that takes Terry? Yeah, takes Terry, oh, cut it off, sorry guys.
So.
Takes Terry and I believe a couple others, if we go with that other option.
This is, I don't have that one right in front of me, but if you look at that third page where it says the eastern division, up along that top row, that would be what our divisionals now would be. So you'd be pulling three teams from two divisions and probably one team from, and rotate it like they used to do it. Yeah, it's different, it's definitely different because we're no longer south, we're more east and north.
And this isn't a, well, whatever they vote, this is what was going, but they may just say it's just going to kind of take in the supplements. They can't, you're never going to get a unanimous vote. So they're going to tell us which way we're going to go based on people or who's safe. It's going to happen whether we.
I don't. If you look at option two, it really does change the four C up quite a bit from what we're, what we've been used to, but the division is pretty much the same, I would say. We'd lose Jordan, we'd lose Terry, we'd lose Weebo. If we went with option two.
Where would you be traveling instead?
Just, then we, instead, we'd be still Broadus, Levna. Like if we chose option one, is that what you mean? Option two, it'd be Broadus, Levna, Forsyth, Busby, Melstone, and probably Custerisham. So actually, I think it's actually further traveling. Like it's crazy to me to cut Weebo out when it's 80 miles away from us, our closest, besides Levna.
You guys, if you were to take a straw poll, which one would you take? So that we can stick it in one.
You guys kind of agree with us. It's, it's really hard because the little schools don't have a lot of say, but there are so many more little schools in the state of Montana, and so our representation is just as important as those double A schools that are huge. So it's not anything anybody really wants to do, it just kind of makes sense. They've been wanting to do it for, I think Mr. Richards said, for like the last 20 years. So it's been in the making. So.
We will write up our input and send it with Mr. Richards when he goes to the media panel in a couple weeks, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Maintenance?
He was here, but I mean, we've got a lot of things going on. I mean, the heat on, the grass dying, all those things. We did get a light pole in the parking lot. Notice that? We literally bumped into it, watched video of that. We bumped into it with the bus, it fell over, it was rotten. Southeast Electric put in a pole for us, and now we are working on getting it wired up, which is what we're visiting about before. They make a good living, outside electricians, running electricity, that. So look for that in the future. It'll probably be about $5,000 to get electricity set to that pole. Some other little things on there as far as looking at the daycare curtains are all installed, looks very, very nice in there. And then we're trying to get rid of the tick cactus on the north side of the football field. We have it ventured over there. It's kind of an adventure, but they did come in the week of homecoming and spray over there. So hopefully if we can, if we can get it killed, that'll, we grow some grass. And yeah, I mean, we had custodians, recognition day, and gave them a big shout out just because they're doing an amazing job of keeping the building super, super clean for us.
Ransom, transportation?
I don't really have any major issues transportation-wise. We did learn that the expedition jacks don't seem to have quite as much up as they need. So it was described to me. So Mr. Whitney did make me some little bases that we can stick under those jacks to get them just that couple inches higher to be able to change a tire if we need to. Our trainee drivers are still working on their training. We're just about to enter into our busy transportation time of October. It's usually the busiest of the year just because we're running three different sports, three different directions, sometimes all on the same day. I think so far, we don't have that this time. But we always change things. Technology-wise, we've been digitizing a bunch of our internal forms. There's one that's public that you can see now, it's the student enrollment form, it's that initial intake form. It's on the website, not quite too prominently yet, but working on that. And then we're participating in the air quality program with DEQ. And if you go to purpleair.com/map, you can see our air quality and air quality in a bunch of other areas around the state and actually the country. So the other day I was just for fun looking at it and watching the smoke roll through Montana over towards us. Our air quality went from like single digits up to about 100 or so, 120. So it's just interesting seeing that.
Thank you, Brandon. Custodial?
Smooth sailing. Things are going pretty good.
Start with Dennis.
So I received a letter from the IRS requesting another 60 days to continue to work on our current forms that I filed with. So we still are on their timeline. I received a bunch of these bills just today from them because they continue to process interest even though we're still trying to fight this. Hopefully, I guess we get another letter in 60 days or we see what they found out or how it's going to happen. That's the IRS situation. We've been doing lots of cross-training as Missy and I get ready to go out. We already have somebody covering the office part-time. So that person's been training, she'll cover full day Mondays and then half days, Tuesday through Thursday, or as needed. And I feel like we need her, she's a perfect time not coming in, so that's kind of nice. We ended up with a worker compensation audit in August, and everything was returned in our whole file findings, so that was good. And Brandon just got notice of a transportation audit specifically around our Taike buses for expeditions. With this help, everything was turned in to Dunlap, the state, and so we're waiting to see if they need more information or not. And then the fiscal, fiscal year '22 audit is complete and available for review. I do have what we found, if you guys want to look at it. We did have a couple findings, but nothing that was too far out of the norm. We have the gaps finding that we get every year because we don't pay $100,000. They wanted us differently, and so they write it up as a finding. We did get one for as their federal being late because you're supposed to have it filed within a year. They've got so much budget, money, and grants, so that was a finding. And then we have a full stage of our credit card. I'm sure we have received the documentation to back up the credit card. So they'll sit on the trajectory and fix. We did point to stuff with the credit cards over there. And then fiscal year '23, they tell me is in the final stages and they should have it before the November meeting. They thought before, so. And then they will come back in the spring to do fiscal year '24, and then it'll be caught up on.
Date there, please?
Things are good, other than a little bit of hand, foot, and mouth, going through all that. We've dealt with that and, you know, everything else seems to be all right.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? This is the time for public comments. Matters that are not on the agenda, members of the audience are encouraged to briefly address the trustees on issues. That is not on the agenda. Public comment?
I would just like to say thank you, Brittany, for all the hard work and hours you put into that. I know, but you're, you're rocking it, so keep it up.
You have a public comment? Public comment? We'll move on to old business, the hiring process, Mr. Captain?
Last month, we went through and kind of laid out why we're looking at adjusting the hiring process. We have a couple other things that they, agenda coming up as we look forward. Look down the, down the path of what hiring may look like in the coming years. But trying to streamline that process, everything, we talked about just kind of laying out what those committee, what that hiring process will look like, what the hiring teams or committees will look like as well as what the board can expect as far as recommendations, specific questions when you get a recommendation as far as that, so, yeah.
Is there any board discussion?
I have a few questions, I guess. I, I really like how you want to make it relevant to each situation. Like if you're hiring a music teacher, you're bringing in music people and that kind of thing. And I think it's always important to have parents' input. But thinking about the parents being on the committee to. committee to while they don't hire, but anyway, the interview, maybe whatever. I guess two things come to mind, like what do you think about confidentiality? With parents being on there? And then the other thing came to mind about that causes friction between parents, say, like you are hiring a coach and you ask certain parents to come in. And maybe they're even close to that coach who, you know, I I guess I talked to several different, I talked to a vice principal of another school and I talked to some teachers, only one teacher that used to teach here. And then a school board member not from here. And just asked like what they do for the committees and so forth. And they all kind of had that same reaction, like, you know, is it going to be wise to have parents on that committee?
Wise, that's a great choice of words, isn't wise. First off, parents, you go through that process, whoever the parents that are on there, if you're asking the parents to, you can have multiple parents on there as well. But there, they essentially sign off on their, the confidentiality piece. Now, is there, can they are, is there any way to police that? They cannot be invited back for sure. And then they sign off on that there. Interview sheets are all kept. They don't leave the room with them, they stay with us. And so everybody's still going to be entitled to their own opinion when they walk out of there, I guess. But I guess my experience has been depending where, when we're hiring, say a paraprofessional, we're probably not going to have. But when we're hiring a coach, for example, as or if he's a big one, to have parents involved, those are going to be, those same people are going to be the people that are going to be the first people sitting in this room, complaining, you know, barking about what's happening and who was hired. So giving them an active role in that is important. Now, how do we choose that parent? That comes down to putting it out there. I mean, I think it comes down to, for us here, really getting to know and trying to find somebody that is not related, not close to, not that as impartial as you can be. Now, are you ever totally impartial? Maybe not. But by not having parents on that committee, I think we, my experience has been we've set ourselves up for immediate criticism that their voice wasn't heard, especially in those, especially, I mean, you bring up coaching as a really big one. The teaching one is also, and then down the line, then parents don't take as much of an active role. But I think it's important to coach the teacher, coach the parents before you go through those interviews and what the expectations are and how to go with that.
I had a question as you were talking and now it left me. So goodness, maybe it'll come back to me this Sunday.
I have a comment. I think we need a hiring process. And I like how this is laid out in the process itself, but I have very similar concerns about having parents involved and community.
Okay, I was wondering, by not having any board members on the committee, if you had like a rotation of board members, does that still make it where you have to have an open session?
If it's an actual board committee, then it has to be posted. If that makes sense. So if it's not a board committee and in that process, we have a board member and it's it's not an assigned, like on our, down the way there, an assigned committee of the board, then we do not. And it's no different than me interviewing anybody or getting a committee, I'm getting a group. Committee is a dangerous word because so if it's a board committee, then it has to be posted. If it's not a board committee, board members can be part of that and then it doesn't have to be posted.
I really like the committee member responsibilities. I think that that provides consistency through all of the hiring, no matter what position it is. I let's see. I think with interviewing, I would assume that those questions would be consistent for each person being interviewed also. My question, I was wondering why with the supervisory positions, a board member would be a part of it, but not for non-supervisory or coaches?
Well, I guess the thought process there would be if you're hiring, if you're the manager or supervisor, if you're leaders in the buildings, the next level underneath of your board is your supervisors. They're going to be in charge of one, two, ten, twenty people, whatever that may be. And so it makes sense that, I mean, in my mind, in that sense, it plays a different role. So I'm more involved at that level. Because those are, those leadership positions, they're going to also be in charge of the next round of hiring. So if you're hiring the head of the janitorial staff and they're going to be in charge of the next two janitors that you hire, that's going to be more a role of the board to supervise that, the board to supervise that. Whereas if you're hiring, say a para, they're not going to be directly supervising somebody and in a way, putting the district in that spot where they're going to suddenly be hiring people in charge.
And then I did reach out to MTSB Legal just to ask them about the parent community being part of the hiring process. And this was the reply, they said, there isn't a legal there isn't a legal prohibition on staff members, students, community members or parents serving on an interview committee. There are a few legal concerns, however. The first is that these individuals may end up having access to applicants' private information, which they normally wouldn't have access to under the law. Another concern is that the board and administration shouldn't cede authority to hire the staff as outlined in section twenty-three dash three twenty-four to the community or employees of the district. Finally, a committee assigned a task to perform on behalf of the full board of trustees, such as interviewing and screening applicants for final hiring recommendations, does not bypass the open meeting law, which I think that they didn't understand what I was asking because that's not, it doesn't pertain to this. For those reasons, typical approach is to have these types of individuals submit comments about the applicants to the committee or board as part of the public comment process, rather than have them serve as a formal part of the hiring process.
You know, I actually like the layout here, Mr. Captain. And as many interviews is set in while on the board, I know it's hard to get hateful interview committee here for them. So I think what you did here by wanting to eliminate the board committee and just have it open for people, I think really wise.
But it wouldn't be just open for people.
No, I know.
You're still happy.
All right, but it wouldn't be a board committee because I'm on the interview committee right now, but I'm not available to have to try. How hard is it to set up an interview after five o'clock?
I've tried to think of ways to say this to not sound bad, but I don't have one. So please don't take it. No matter who's in here, if the wrong person were to step into our administration role, they'd really have the chance to stack the deck for their hiring committee. They're the ones choosing the committee, every single person on it.
And I would jump in there and say, that's not, that's a fair assessment. But I would also come back to that and say that in a way, the board's number one job, the board's number one hire is insurance. Whoever, whether that's me or somebody else. And so if the board has faith in their hire, then the person in this chair is trying to build a team to take the mission of the way that the board hired them to. And so there's a certain, I mean, you're right. You're going to try to stack the deck and you're going to try to, let's say you're hiring a teacher. You're going to want, hey, we're moving to proficiency-based across Montana. And so you're thinking, okay, well, am I going to hire a teacher that is absolutely stuck in, like, holding on to grades? Or am I going to try and build with people that think about proficiency-based things? There is that, but that's where you're trying to get us to go. So I guess I I would hope that the board does their diligence and hires the person. And then when they put the person in this spot, they trust that person, that they're not really stacking the deck in a bad way. They're building the group to try to find who's going to be the best fit. Who's going to be, whether it's a para, whether it's a coach, whether it's a teacher, who's going to be the best fit in our system? So, but I mean, I do, I mean, your point is valid that you will try to shape that, but I think that's, I mean, I think that's the role you're, the hat you put on when you hire this position.
Any other public comment? Any public comment?
I just have a couple of questions, I guess. And I guess coming from the athletics director's standpoint being first up. So number one, who gets the final say? So we sit in a committee. Let's say Amy and I go out and we find all these candidates. The parent or the community member, like, well, I like this guy better. But Amy and I are the ones that have to work with them the most. So who do we go with? Who gets that final say? No, no, I mean, when we come with our recommendation. Who gets the final say?
However, I mean, in fairness, when you sit in a committee like that, the person who signs off on it, truly signs off on it, is the person who brings our recommendation. So if you're bringing me a recommendation on a hire, then you're bringing it to me. We had a healthy discussion. It was, we had a lot of input on this, but based on these, based on these factors, this is who we're taking forward. So if you're running that, say, coaching interview and that, that's in theory, in that point, then you two will have the final say.
Okay, and then number two, in the past, and this is the way that Laura has put it, I guess, is that we don't reapply or make our cooks reapply, we don't make Brittany reapply every year. We don't make any of those people, I mean, rehired. So is that going to be an expectation now that we start doing that with coaches within these programs?
That they don't reapply?
No, no, that if we have somebody that comes in, the coaches, are we going to need to make them reapply every year?
Our coaches re, our coaches are rehired every year? They don't necessarily reapply every year, correct?
Well, we make the recommendation, they say they want to come back, we're okay with that. But if we, if we are going towards community and co, or in parent input, I mean, we're not taking their input, we do it that way. So I guess what I'm saying is, is are we okay continuing with that?
Yes.
Wrap.
I would say yes, and this is why. Because my expectation for, for specific to coaching, my expectation is that you are listening to community. And if there is something going on that you have had eyes on the situation on the soccer team, because we don't have a soccer team, so that's a perfect one to use. And so you're listening to that and you're validating or saying, you know, that's not, that's not actually true. And then you're bringing that forward. But I mean, we should be listening. We should be listening to parents after seasons, all of those things. And that should play a role in the decision we're making because their kids are our customers.
Correct, and that's, and that's something that Amy and I probably need to be better about is seeking that input. But I guess Amy and I work really hard to try to find the best fit for our kids. And we want you guys to know that, I guess. I guess.
And I mean, I will jump back in here and say that when you bring me a recommendation, we're going to have had conversations about that, whether it's a current coach in the system or we're hiring a new coach or in those things. So I, I mean, those are, those are, again, that's a, you're in this position because you're in this position. If I, from my position, from, if you're looking at a superintendent's job, if I don't think you're doing the job, then my job isn't to deal with coaches. My job is to deal with the people in the supervisory positions. That's the two of you. And so that conversation goes, goes all the way around. And so that's where I have to trust what you're doing. And if there isn't an issue there, then I'm bringing it to you.
But aren't you, and I don't have that. But you're on the committee, right?
I could be. I mean, it would make sense that I would be on it.
I guess those were just some recommendations. I guess it was reading it from the outset. Like I wish somebody would have just talked about, like, before, just so Amy and I could have wrapped our hands around it, I guess. We're just trying to figure out where we sit.
Yeah, mine is probably more like a personal thing, like as a parent more. I just don't think bringing parents in for coaches is a good idea just because where do you draw the line? Who do you choose from? Because if we're going to have mad parents about coaches already, talk about mad parents by doing that. And they're going to be hot, as well as community members. I don't know where you draw the line on that. Okay, you guys were voted and elected on this board as community members and some of you are parents and you're filling those positions. And that's why you're on this board. That's part of your responsibilities in my mind. Like when I look at like the fact that the school board will be on the hiring process for like supervisory positions, but then as a teacher, like, that's insane to me that this school board wouldn't have, you know, more input on our teaching, teacher candidates. It was certified, classified. You know, and I think, is it more just so it doesn't have to be a posted meeting? Is that kind of where this is going towards? Mr. Captain, like these hiring processes, or am I just making that up in my mind?
I'm not going to say you're making that up in your mind. That would be mean, but
I mean, so you don't have to post stuff.
There's a couple of pieces to this. So the board has, their job is to approve hiring recommendations, period. That really is their job. They can also come in and look at any, any interview of any applicant and and offer their insights on that. But they have, they have the ultimate vote, no matter what decision we bring to them.
Right. Yes, and that's, that's the other part is that you guys will have the final say. And if there's upset parents, they should be here and that's when they should be voicing their opinions, is when it is being presented to the board or communicating with you guys or communicating if it's a coach, you know, with Mrs. Spencer and I. But you guys do have the final say and if parents have an issue and they don't come to Carol and I, and then Mr. Captain to you guys, that's how they should address something. And I just, I know that coaches are what, they spend so much time with kids, but I, as a teacher, spend so much time with kids too. I don't know. I just, in my mind, I can't really wrap my head around it. And I think you're going to have very, I think, I feel in my heart, it will cause a division in the community if you put a parent and a community member on these committees because I don't know how you choose that. You can say they're going to be You can say they're going to be, have integrity and all this stuff, but you don't know that. So that's, thank you for being on the school board.
Any other public comment?
Yeah. As a coach for, oh my gosh, 20 years, 14 years here. Number one reason coaches quit are parents. And not all parents are bad, don't get me that. And don't, and I get heat of the moment situations, I understand that. I'm not a parent, so I can't speak from the parent's side. But as somebody that votes two, three hours a night with the kids, which I love them, I do, I love them, to come back after losing a game and have parents pissed at me because their kid didn't play or because we're up 40 points and I didn't play individual. Like, that's where it comes down to. It's exhausting as a coach to have parents on you. Don't get me wrong, there's some that do send me a text once in a while and say, thank you. I do appreciate those. But those other ones outweigh that a lot. And I'm, I'm a female, I take it hard because I do care about them. They're my kids. So when a parent that's upset that their kid didn't play, oh, I take offense to it for other reasons. But it's number one reason coaches quit are parents. So, that's all.
Any other public comment?
There. Well, I really liked it, I came with a ready for it. Because I trusted you guys' opinion. Because we can't all make it, we have lives and distances and stuff like that. You were there, you. So, especially with the way the teachers, with the, with the coaches I've been with lately, but with the teachers, you guys made recommendations, it was nice. But I think it would be better for you to do it than just some random parent and didn't get elected to the board. So somebody who had voted for you must trust your opinion.
Nobody wants your job.
You guys do.
Is there any other board discussion?
I don't know, it's, this sounds weird. But to me, it's like being the judge of a chili contest. And we, we have to face, we can't taste the chili. Somebody else is tasting the chili and we have to take their opinion to. I, I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else. But I, I feel like, yeah, if we don't have our hands in it, how, how do we vote then? Just, just on random people's recommendation.
I kind of have to agree with where everybody's been kind of going with this. I, I like the structure and the process of the committee setup. Gone too far in the other direction. I don't have an issue with one or two of people who school board down a little bit. Instead of having committees, like official committees or board. School board should be involved.
I agree, Stefan. And as far as being able to do interviews quickly, I think it's, that's a plus of not having a committee. But I, there's good parts and parts that I don't like. Uh, I don't know what else I can say yet. Because I don't know what my position is for sure tonight. I can't make a motion. Okay.
And I mean, this is just like every other document before you guys. You have the ability to make changes. You don't have to have like a work session or something to make edits. It's not, you guys will necessarily, sort of in the one policy comes before you or recommendations or whatever. So, you know, what's in front of you is not set in stone. What's in front of you is because you have to have all of the pieces of the puzzle. Otherwise, you're not allowed to make a decision legally. So you have all the pieces. How you want to trouble together.
You know, like I said earlier, as many interviews as we've been through, and it's been open meeting, how many parents actually showed up to that and voiced their opinion. After the interviews, there wasn't a whole lot of community input and it was all board discussion.
Well, confidentiality, I don't think that they could actually be.
Yes, they can, it's an open meeting.
Open meeting, open meeting. Okay.
The open meeting stuff makes sense, or did you guys want clarification? Change or something happened? And he said, we have a really great teaching agenda, we're doing it here in June tomorrow. Put it out. Two of you came, that'd be fine. But having the committee have to schedule 48 hours out, has to be those people on the committee. And there's just a lot of those legalities in place as far as scheduling for him and hosting.
Well, that's where what I was kind of saying.
Yeah.
Just instead of like in here, so. Committee will include at least one other head coach, parent staff member. It could be like, committee can include another head coach, superintendent, and one or two school board members. Just like very vague. So it's not like a committee with the school board. And that wouldn't make, the open meeting will last.
Is it something that people want to work on? Details of?
I, I like the process. I would say the process is good without parents in community and to add a trustee. I'm not making a motion. I'm just discussing.
Okay. I think that, I don't know if there's any way to do it, but I do like the idea of, you know, if there is a board member part of the interview, that there can be a rotation for, so that each board member can have that opportunity. The word word is close and I can't hold out. That could be the second option.
I would make a motion to disband the interview committee, but to have a trustee present during the interviews. At least one interview, one trustee.
I do think your motion, the interview committee is part of the business on its own. These other board are their home.
Just reading how it's written.
You must be ahead of the hiring process.
No, I'm on the hiring process. We would like to disband the interview committee.
That's the next one.
It's right there, first paragraph.
In, in there, but it's the next, I'm sorry, it's not part of the recommendation.
9:47. Oh, okay. Hey, stop that and spam the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, there's an action, there's an action in the next section.
Yeah, on the action for this superintendent recommendation is to approve the hiring process documents as presented.
Okay. I'll move to approve the hiring process. With table.
And still a parent and a community member.
Without the parent or community. I, as a parent, I can't. I couldn't be. I would be.
Mike, can you repeat your motion?
Can I repeat how I typed it?
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the hiring documents as presented with the addition of a board member or members. Also with the removal of a parent or community member. That's all right?
Yes.
Mike made a motion to approve the hiring process as presented with changes. Including, to include one or more board members and to exclude parents and community members. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Is there any public comment? Any public comment?
I just wanted to say I really do like the layout because I am a format person, so this is nice. So we can go through and check, 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 check. And it's, I just would, I was just meaning, I don't, Mr. Cafferty, I like this idea. I just, I didn't know where Amy and I sat, so that was what I was meaning.
Any other public comment?
Any other board comment? Well, I do like the part in there speaking to somebody who's relevant to that position that you're hiring. I don't know if that needs to be a part of the, in the motion. So, but I do like that part.
Any other board comment?
I like the format, I really do. I think it's nice to have something that's consistent and in place to help with that hiring process. So thank you.
Mike has made a motion to, to approve the hiring process with the changes of including a board member or two and excluding parents and community from that hiring process. Stefan has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to new business. Committee is looking at work.
So based on just what we just did, then, then, disband the board committee.
Is there any board comment? The whole community thing?
Just the interview.
Well, we're just the interview part for the whole.
Just there. You're not that lucky.
I, I am going to chime in because I don't know where to put this. But this is what we originally decided in May and everything's right on the one that you have in here except for the policy was supposed to be Stefan not me.
Yeah. No one else confirmed that, so I never fixed it because I didn't have any other ones.
She is right.
That's fine.
I actually texted it to you June 24th.
Well, and then I messaged some of the other ones to make sure I had it. And it wasn't just, I had a note, you had a note, we didn't match, so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Sounds like I wasn't going to do this.
That's why you.
You weren't.
That's why I'm on the policy.
Any other board comment? Is there any public comment? Public comment? Is there any other board discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve the removal of the interview committee.
Mike has made a motion to approve, approve the removal of the interview committee. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Board comment? Has made a motion to approve the removal of the interview committee. All those, and they have seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to extracurricular hiring. Carol or Amy?
Um, our head coach from last year has decided to step down and wants to be a part of both as a volunteer. So she can be part of, for, for, sorry, for track. So she can be a part of junior high and high school. So we would like to hire Mick O'Connor for the head track coach. And then Jennifer, sorry, is junior high. And then our old, Choco would like to back in for the old. So she can be a helper. So as, as a volunteer, she wants to volunteer for a, she doesn't want to be tied up. I really appreciate her, her interview book, because she's. We are waiting on a confirmation on assistants. For the last year's assistant, which was edited a little bit more time. We will have an answer for you. That's all right.
Thanks, Carol. Is there any board comment? Any public comment? Public comment? Is there any other board discussion or motion?
I'll move to hire Mick for high school track and Jenna for junior high track.
I second that. Mike has made a motion to hire Mick O'Connor for high school, head high school coach, track coach, and Jen Bruce for junior high track coach. He will second the motion. Is there any public comment? Carol?
I just would like to emphasize if anybody ever has problems, and this goes back to the interview thing, all that, please, please, please make sure if you hear or if they're not sure where to come to, that people are coming to Amy and I with issues so that we can be aware when it comes to hiring. Um, I hear, I've heard several people say, well, we don't really like that person. Well, we didn't hear about it. Make sure they come to us so that we have an idea when we get ready to hire or send in a committee that we are aware of the situations within the community. So I just, Amy and I really wanted to make sure we were pushing that chain of command so that we can hear, hear things. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Uh, Mike has made a motion to hire Mick O'Connor as head high school track coach and Jen Bruce as junior high track coach. And he will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Railing on the parental property.
There should have a new, we got an email, one in the book, the correct one, you know, with the agenda item. So we would like to, and I'm gonna have Brittany explain all of it, make sure we understand how the budget works with the rental property. So we would like to put out a bid to just get an idea of what it would cost to put on some sort of mid-sized, maybe ten by ten, ten by sixteen, somewhere in that deck off the back of the, of the trailer. The, the front is finished, but it has essentially like a railing staircase coming down, which is, is meets requirements, but now the reason we are proposing that is to give you the basic definition, to give you the bookkeeper definition. The money that we take in, we can only carry over so much, so the rental property revenue, we have to be in the essence reinvesting that back into what we're doing. And so if we didn't have to do that, then it would be a probably different conversation. And so as we look at those rental properties, where can we improve them? That is something that probably needs to get done, and so we'd like to get a general idea of what it would cost. Putting it out to bid isn't bringing it back saying we want to do it yet, but so that, A, we know, and then we can go, okay, how this is gonna work.
So the lease and rental agreement, so your fund twenty can only carry $10,000 every year. The state will not let you carry more than ten. Please thank you how big expenses it came into July. So right now, we're, we're finally getting to the point where we're taking in more rent than we're spending in like repairs and maintenance of it, and so that's where we're looking at some upgrades to the property. Then when he's also there, like if the washer goes out, the bridge goes out, we used, we had repaint. Mr. Caffey took much holes and repaint that with working moved in, that came out of that fund, and so that's what it's for, but it is, it grew exponentially last year having a second rental property. They capped us out, so.
So can you tell us how much is in the fund right now?
It's, it's over $10,000 right now.
Like how much?
I carried $9,800 when we rolled in July. So July didn't have the $2,000, it's August, September, it's rent, they're both out, so I have an extra $1,200, which is like $1,000, so.
And when can that not carry over?
June 30th.
So we're out in front of a bid. If that's something we end up choosing to do, again, if not, we're not gonna bring you back, I'm telling you, we're not gonna bring you back a proposal to, to say, let's do this in November. But then we have a dollar amount, we know what it looks like, and as we get into the second half of the school year, as we start getting closer to July, then we can potentially, if we wanted to do that, knowing we've had all their expenses, then we at least know what we're playing with. We're not, we're ahead of the game, not behind.
And I think it goes into Mr. Caffey and trying to figure out with Arnold, uh, facilities plan. He'll have our facilities too, so what is our plan over there for grass or, and after, we can just kind of create a long-term vision for those properties over there, not just.
That is something that's been worked on. Something that it must strategic.
There's a lot of little pieces, but.
Putting the Legos together.
Any board discussion? Why do you have the word excluding in there?
You're, you're, you're looking at the old one.
Like even if you guys up the name on, I don't turn it.
No, can you just click on it? Rans it? We can probably tip it towards us for a second.
So I can probably read it to you also.
Do you mind if I read it, Bryn?
Um, it says to approve the request to open bid for Railing Project and Deck Project and allow superintendent approval of over $5,000 if necessary.
I have a question, do you have to have board approval to ask for a bid for a project? Or just when it comes down to accepting the bid that potentially is over $5,000?
Exactly, I know not to accept it, but I think it's. I mean, you guys can say we don't want a deck.
Okay. More of the discussion.
It is up to code right now. If anybody does ask, we did clarify with insurance today, if the town doesn't have any specific regulations that we are made aware of, and so we reached out to insurance. Also doesn't have any, and they rely on OSHA, your town doesn't do so, the current structures that are over there, it needs regulations.
Is there any, uh, public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion?
Well, it, money's already there, it's already in that rental, it's not affecting the general budget or anything, right? Just to clarify, because I know there's gonna be questions on that.
Some doubt, we turned it off. And that's where you said, I think, we wait for spring and if it looked like we didn't replace the house and flood that we spent money replacing.
I just want to make sure it was clarified, that way if there's any questions why we're doing this.
That was completely different.
Thank you.
I think it would be good to be able to look at some bids. To get a better estimate of what it's going to cost and then the plan you guys have visited about for the properties and see what the barriers are.
As a former contractor, the pricing on decks can be all over the place, and they can get very expensive.
And the pricing of contractors.
Yeah.
And the pricing of contractors.
So I'd, I'd have a hard time saying the second part of the recommendation without at least having a cap put on it, but it'd probably be better just to bring it back to the board once bids are received.
Do you have one more? Is there a question?
Any other discussion?
It's discussion.
I would throw in there that I think that's, that's super fair because potentially with this bid, we, as we build that plan out, we might get up a straight bill. We have to present that in the same year's, $7,000, you can pick one, two, three, four, five, you gotta pick two, five, or whatever it is. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I will make the motion to put out bids for rental property improvements. We brought that to the board.
Stefan's made a motion to send out bids or get bids for the rental properties and to bring the bids back to the board. Sam has seconded it. Is there any public comment? Public comment?
How long are you gonna leave these bids open for?
How long will the bid open?
Uh, I, well, I would say we open it up by next week. I would say six weeks is long, long enough to give everybody a fair chance to look at it and get an idea of.
Any other board comment? Stefan's made a motion to get bids on rental properties, bring back to the board for approvals, Sam has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And simply, Mr. Caffey?
Um, Danica McCabe has applied for substitute.
Substitute, sorry.
You jumped ahead.
Should have pulled over that morning and my other ones.
Oh, I'm.
You're, you're on the right one.
Danica McCabe has applied to be the subs- substitute teacher, uh, so we, we're going to approve that.
Any board comment? Public, oh, I don't know her. She's right there. Oh, okay, I'm Danica. Any public comment? Any public comment? Any other board discussion or motion? I need to put Danica on the. He has made a motion to put Danica McCabe on the substitute list. I'll second. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board comment? He has made a motion to get Danica McCabe on the substitute list, and Mike has seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now on to.
Um, now we're on the same page. Uh, so we, obviously, finding qualified teachers is not getting easier anytime probably in the near future. And so as far out in front of that as we can be, um, visited with Ms. O'Connell as far as the union rep and talked about what it would look like if we put an incentive out to put us as far out in front of this as we possibly, um, as, as far as we can. And so part of that discussion was, I mean, honestly, for me, I, I just know that we, there's already job pairs coming in November. If we are looking at some of the different Montana projects where they are working with the colleges to get student teachers or teachers into the, some of those classrooms, it, it just gives us a lot more options to get as many possible applicants as we can. Amazingly enough, though, the good news about teachers are most of them are loyal, and so if you sign them, it's not quite like college football and NIL, they don't quite jump ship. Oftentimes, it's the first one that signs them that gets them, and so I think we can make some compelling arguments to hire people and, and want to be able to have those conversations, but I don't know what positions we're gonna have. And so if there are people that are going to, and I have, I would not even want to guess at one or five or two or whatnot. But if there are people that are thinking about it in our district that are, are going to resign, retire, move to a different place, that if we offer a couple different incentives, potentially a thousand dollars, we'd have to sign an MOU with the union to get that done. They would have to vote on that, so we'd have to take it in front of them before the November meeting. So bring it back to us for that, for our November meeting. So I would propose, I would throw it out there to think about offering a thousand dollars, because it'd be actually a waste of money, but it would definitely put us in a really good spot. If they are going to leave their teaching position, they let us know before December 1st, and if they're going to leave their position before January 1st, they get $500 for that.
This goes through the same process as everything else, just obviously no motion right now.
Right, so just informational for you guys to discuss, and hopefully we can come with the best.
Is there any board discussion? I just think our budget's really tight, and I don't know if this will fit into it, is one of my concerns.
It would come out eighty-two, it would not come out of the general fund. So eighty-two is our local agreement. There is not, so if we did, we did develop a, um, the general fund, but also. Job pairs in March.
So. Five hundred before January?
Before January 1st.
Can you give me the description of eighty-two?
Eighty-two is the multi-district or local between the two. So, um, good years, so it's the high school and grade school have a fund between a, they share, and it can be used for anything because it was money that was, you were involved, like the years of pastor, we were involved, our general fund more moved money into that agreement. It can be used for anything, it's kind of like our CDs.
That's what I was wondering is what it could be used.
I would, I would add to this conversation, though, is whatever, if we, if we go down this path, that it truly is investing for our kids. Because the sooner we can get teachers onboard, as far as if we're gonna be looking for other things, the sooner we can have conversations about how that mixes in with other pieces of what we want to offer or what we may not offer anymore. Whether, you know, looking, thinking about music, thinking about business, thinking about these kind of things, how we shape those positions. The, the more time we have to actually get that is, is truly an investment for our kids because then we can have, you know, get those people in, in some creative ways. But if we are looking for those positions in March, and it turns into we're looking for those positions in June, and there's no conversation, there's no professional development. It, it, the staff that stays here, it puts them in a tough spot, which in the end, all puts our kiddos in a tough spot.
So this is just incentive for those leaving to let you know where to leave.
And usually, I would say before, we would know by March-ish if they retire, I mean, not necessarily moving or whatever, March 1st is kind of a tier, they want their payments right away. Obviously, there are timelines before retiree, so it's more in March-ish.
And what is it for, what's the date?
Right now, the only reason.
I can't remember when they have to let you know if they're coming out.
They don't have to. When they sign their contract, after July 1st, they always punch back. So we do contracts right now in March, and so usually that's what's signed, it'd be by like April, end-ish.
That's.
You have to like know what you lost and then.
Is there any public comment?
My question is, we can have like a timeframe in regards to what would.
Can you put the mic, please, because they can't hear you otherwise? Thank you.
I have a question about timeframe. Let's say we get a new student out of college, they move here, and they stay a year. Do they get that thousand dollars? Are we gonna change it if you've been in the school system for so many years? Sorry.
That, that's a, I guess I would answer that question with, this would only apply right now to this year.
Okay.
And so it would, if we were going to look at doing it next year, we'd have to have that conversation next year, so to know, it would be, I mean, it's, it put us in a spot this year, knowing, just to try to get ahead of it. If nobody, nobody's leaving, then we can also hold out.
Because we've had people make it here and see Galact, and they leave, and there's a thousand dollars. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Matt. Any other public comment? So this is just informational purposes, we'll move on to strategic plan.
So the strategic plan is what you were handed last time, and we, everybody should have had it in their hands last time, so you had a month to read it from, words backwards, sideways, all of those kind of things. So the first three columns of that is pretty much unchangeable at this point. The fourth column, the update, is what we've been working on. But this needs to be in front of us to be thinking about as we, as we roll into, you know, the first year, because there are things that we need to, to consider about this. Are we staying true to our, um, are we? Are we staying true to our, um, are we staying true to our, our, our strategic plan? What do we need to change? What do we need to do? We start to look through those. Uh, just as an example, on page two of that strategic plan where it talks about STEAM, we have drama and music. We currently don't have drama or music. And so we have to figure out with our numbers, with, with a hundred and thirty kids, with our staff, with those things, what are the most important that we are offering? And if we, if, if drama and music, for example, in this case, are something that we need to be offering, then we need to figure out a way to offer it. Okay? Um, whether that's partnering, I don't even know, with the museum and doing something with their, um, drama, acting, something, or I don't, I'm, I'm winging that part, but we have to figure out which parts of this, because this, this plan, as we look at it, has some pieces that we don't have very well defined. New electives for the, the CTE courses, what does that actually look like? We can say we're going to offer new electives, but what electives do we want to offer? How are we going to determine those electives? Is that going to be kid-generated, parent group-generated in, in the sense of, you know, we want more welding classes, whatever that looks like. We, we have to, we have to kind of really get an understanding of this because, I mean, it, it's fair to say we're not meeting that. And that's not, that doesn't, that's not a bad thing. But we want to refine it so we know where we're going. Um, if you jump to that other piece, there's, there's things that we are changing that we've been working on as, as a group, myself and the staff, professional learning committees, um, the PK through three is, is working together, four through six and seven through twelve are meeting, um, weekly and having conversations with me, but they're also having conversations about some of those data pieces that we've been talking about. We're, we're, we're trying to really look at where kids are and how we're communicating that as well with our parents, uh, working, um, through different grants that we can get. We have to kind of get to a point where we, we know where we're focusing. If we, again, I'll come back to the, the drama and music. If we really are focused on getting a music teacher, then we need to figure out how to get a music teacher. Which means we're going to have to figure out how to, how to hire or incentivize somebody on our staff to getting, um, a second endorsement or, or whatnot, or how that looks. And it, it's kind of this tricky balance where we can't, we can't make everybody happy. So we've got to figure out what we're going to be good at and be good at it. And then if fifty kids move here and, uh, our enrollment goes up, we have, we adjust that way. Right now, we're, 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 we're not necessarily hitting all of those, those pieces. So that's kind of why we put it on there, um, looking at a lot of different pieces of it. We're talking about it. I've spent lots of time looking at it, trying to guide where, where I'm going with different things.
Thank you for the update. It's nice to know where we're at. And where we're going and the surveys, I think, are great. I appreciate the feedback because when we built this, those were the ideas at the time, just like you're talking about, maybe at that time we needed it, but we've kind of changed gears when we need to, you know, focus on some other goals within the plan. So, thank you.
In the AP classes, dual credits, in the update part, it says for juniors and seniors, is it still just juniors and seniors? It's offered to.
No, it's, I don't, everybody taken.
On AP, I think.
We have. Yeah, I believe they're all juniors and seniors. Good, good thing about that was, uh, you know, with Carol was still here, Carol and I just had a conversation about, about this literally last week. She was sitting in on, on one of her counselor workshops and she said we're maybe missing a boat a little bit. Other schools are talking about their freshman sophomores taking dual credit, so that then they're getting a little bit deeper into these more specific classes of juniors and seniors. And, um, that it's costing kids like forty-eight dollars by their time they're junior, senior to take, because they're, they, they can take two classes for free through the Montana University system. But then after that, when they're tied to school, that they're, they're taking, they can take these classes for forty-eight bucks, well, they can't take those. They can't go show up at Mile City and take those for forty-eight bucks. And so they're graduating with their associate's degree, they're getting way more specific into those things. So, um, I know she's pondering, think, figuring out how we can get that worked into some of our earlier classes and, which is, which is a good.
That's what I was kind of wondering is if, if you guys just wanted it to be offered to them, it could be offered to younger because it is, you know, my daughter, when she graduated high school, she had almost, or she had a semester with credits done and at a fraction of the cost. I mean, five hundred dollars versus twenty thousand dollars for whatever it is.
And we can offer that as long as they're capable, as long as they're ready to go with those classes, we, we can offer those, um, into their freshman year. That's, that's part where Carol has to, we have to work together to kind of come up with, what does it look like? How do we judge? How do we get it?
May not be ready for that. But it's also really good for those kids to have that experience before they go to college. They know what to expect from the professor. It is not the same as these wonderful, nice teachers that we have here. They're a little bit more difficult and not as forgiving.
It's kind of crazy because there's no going back. Every school is doing this. But this has ruined a lot of programs in this school. And I, I take Thompson-Pauls as an example. They don't have any kids that are in music for four years now because they only have to have two years. This school only has to have one, right? And so then the kids are doing that instead of being in school right here. And so it's ruined a lot of their programs because they're so close to the consumer law. And so, but I know every school's doing it and, I mean, if you don't do it, then if you don't offer it, I, I think it's, but you do have to look at incentivize, yeah.
For sure. And there is the option too, which is tricky for us, just, uh, you know, the, if we had a, a teacher, any of our teachers that have master's degrees can be, um, they can essentially be certified to teach from the college, um, in some of these dual enrollment classes. And so therefore, it's a little different setup. Most schools don't go that path, um, just because, so that's one of those things where to keep them in the building, we could look at that differently as well. I mean, we can look at, how do we reward teachers that, that want to be, you know, teaching a class that qualifies a kid for college credit? Which means they're not going to be as nice as our, as our teachers in a sense, they're going to be more of that college mindset too. So, I, the, the whole part about all of these things as well, we have to be, I, I think one of the parts that really stands out to me is we have to get to a point where we're not just looking at the quote-unquote college credits. We have to look at, um, we have a student right now that is working really, really hard and his goal is to be a diesel mechanic. And he's looking at going into a, a very small, I mean, like a, a year-long program when he, when he gets done. And so he doesn't need any of these dual credit classes. He needs to have us prepare him and help him get to that next step. And so when we start to think about, we have to be, we have to be thoughtful in building this because for a lot of our kids, a very, very, very successful future does not involve what we call a college class. It involves a life class, maybe it's, you know, plumbing, electrical, all those kinds of things, but it doesn't involve going to two-year or four-year school in that way as you'd be going into directly like a, um, apprentice tech program, if you will. And so we have to, we have to think about how we're going to get there as well.
On page four, on the survey community. Do you mean the spring of twenty-five? I would have said. Right, first.
Those dates were originally put in.
Okay, I was reading it like Mr. Kathy was doing it in the spring of twenty-four, so I was like, uh, that's. Sorry.
It was on the radar to do Mr. Go before he left.
Gotcha.
It's in these different lines.
You're good. Okay. Then with the staff discounts or wages, bonuses, benefits, what is?
So, um, yeah, it's, uh, you know, I, I knew coming into this year that there was no way I could magically make the money tree, put more money in every teacher or staff member's pocket. So just started working with some of the local, for example, A and B, Up on the Hill, Fruits, um, to get staff discounts directly for our staff. And so tho- those are just two examples. They, the staff got an entire, I'm going to say like five pages of things that gave them a discount for being a, a staff member. Some of those, like Verizon, get a discount as long as you fill that out, a discount, twenty percent off for there. So couldn't give them more money, left more money in their pocket. Fruits on oil and, and service, uh, Aspen's Up on the Hill, oil and service, um, they get, Fruits is kind of unique, it's kind of a cool thing, they're, they're both really good for our, our staff, but so up at Fruits, they have a couple of our, um, school to work students working. So any of the staff members that need tire service or oil changes, those students, which I guess sounds scary, but, um, those students, when they go to school to work, take the staff's car, do the oil change, bring it back. As a result, um, they get a, I'll give this off the top, I want to say a twenty-five dollar discount off the price of the service. Aspen has a, a, a straight-up discount any day that they bring them in. So just little things from hotels to their phones, trying to find wages, find ways to, I guess, leave more money in their pockets, even though I know I can't, we can't pay them.
So on page five, veteran teachers feeling more appreciated. Can you kind of elaborate, do you have any ideas yet or is that still kind of what you're reading this from?
Um, I, so this is, this was, um, we, Brittany and I had a conversation about this. I was kind of like, where, what, what was the premise of this or where did it come, come about? I, off the top, I think we've been, just been working to, to show staff appreciation, just like similarly to the, the wages and bonuses. But as far as veteran staff, I think that's going to come up in our IBB. I think we have to be, um, I think we have to look at this from, using one of those fun words, but a holistic approach and, and how do we, how do we not have staff look at and go, well, you know what, I could drive thirty miles. I've been here for X number of years. I like it here, I'm going to continue to live here, but I'm going to drive thirty miles and work in, in Baker just because I'm going to get X, Y, and Z up there. We, we have to figure out to do whatever we can within our means. I mean, we're, we've had lots of, lots of conversations. Uh, I think there are some things that we have not explored as well yet. The, the, the whole school funding model, we probably had a conversation, oh, every day for the last two weeks about this. So that we're leaving, so let's, not to muddy the water, but we're potentially leaving next year sixty thousand dollars of state money on, on the table that we can't get because our, our salaries aren't where they need to be. In order to get to that point, it would cost us a hundred and thirty thousand. So we'd have to invest seventy, get sixty. So once we got to that point, what we're working on is what would it cost us over a year? Because the state is only going to continue to give us more money based on that quality educator trying to increase base salaries across the state. So how can we get there? Well, we can, I don't know, um, just magically make money appear, or are there some other ways? Is there some conversations within the county as far as county commissioners? Is there other ways potentially we can get our, our base salary up there that doesn't just come out of our general fund? Yes. What are they at? Well, no? Don't know. We're, we're exploring those because, and if we don't get the money that, that the state is offering to help with teaching, with help with educators, every year, we're just leaving more money on the table and we're never going to catch up. And so just in southeastern Montana, trying to hire against a Broadus, against a Baker, against a Puvna, we're, we're not, we're not going to be able to do it. And so we, that's, that's, I mean, I think that goes back to the veteran teachers as well because we have to get that, we have to get that schedule to a competitive place where they've been teaching for twenty years, they're being rewarded for twenty years, not twelve.
One of the things that we can't change, the bus barn. The more I've talked to the bus drivers that we have for, you know, forever and ever, that they think of bus barn as a waste of money.
And I was on that little internal committee, after we approved all this and we were talking about like the goals underneath, we got to, and we're like, I'm sorry, I'm sure we put this on there, that's why we kind of made the comment, it was more of like, if you're trying to be honest, honestly, I don't want to lock you guys up next to a teacher. Because that was kind of how all of us felt. But it was already, this was already adopted, we were right in the, on your goals.
Central on page seven. Since we're there, we don't have to turn a page, that next one down. Um, next Monday, next Monday, we have a meeting with the architect about the roof. We also have, um, Ty Williams is sitting in on that Southeast electric to look at. There's some grant funding available through, through them as well as Southeast helping with changing lights over and different things, which will help us with energy bills. But trying to get as much information as we can on that to bring back to the board, kind of really lay out a plan. That is not something that if, that is coming, um, that we are going to have to kind of really have that bond laid out well. And so we're trying to get as many players in the community that need to be part of that.
What's that?
Still getting grounds, it's formal. I could post it.
Bring the dude's stuff in?
I was just going to say. Sorry, it's not in the great time of the day. We're hoping that Bob was going to make him first.
What time are you?
Tell me how that, what'd you say?
Two thirty.
He was going to come the twenty-fifth of October and I just wasn't sure.
The architect is coming Monday, the fourteenth, at two thirty.
Yeah, I'm off. I'm not on that committee. We come over, sit them off and.
And Bob is, I think he's, he is willing to kind of make a plan, hold a bond or have a timeline on a project. Him and Green are going to come down at June, our community meetings, which I think is huge because then it's not me answering questions, you answering questions. You guys, it's, it's the, can we themselves answering what's going on, why it needs to happen?
Can we post the?
What's that, the community meeting?
The.
Monday?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just post it as a, a building committee.
Thank you. This, the title one, it was, uh, we're not exactly sure what is going to play this, but Mr. Kathy, Brittany, I'm on this title one, right? It's of the state. You mean, like, you're not sure?
I'm not sure what they were getting at with the title one usage. My guess is, is items like, optional purchase or things, they could have, they felt like money could have been spent better on. I was never in on that small girl.
I think that they were talking about like, giving it, giving it public rate. I think that they were talking about like, giving it, giving it publicly. Like, what was it that Mr. Cook did in gym with everybody?
Yeah, the parent meetings.
Parent meetings.
And he got title one, wanted to add your information.
Something, something that involves the community versus.
Yeah. Yeah, so the grant we submitted this year is just like what Mr. Cook and I submitted. It's salaries that are applicable to the grant. And then there is a fucking line for supplies, which is like our remind app. We gave it out of there, we ran that paper there and then brought it to us because they call Carol stuff. Oh, that's. They like to try to round some of the matters. Yeah, Carol's math, I want to share.
That's right. That's another thing I was trying to think of.
Yeah, it's all built on funding lines. It's all a little bit, there's salaries, benefits and supplies.
Is there any public comment for any of this? One or four. Page eight, under the parental communication apps. So I know there's a remind on here. I just don't know if you have a standard app like eight or 12 where parents could communicate with teachers and vice versa. Or if that should just be done by, you know, email? Given that any thought?
We have. And so it, remind is pretty expensive. And so we have remind and it pretty much goes.
Sure.
Shares information out and it's not broken up by classes and it's not broken up by teams. The next step up, like almost double the price. So we also have, if the campus messages can go out. But we also, I mean, so then we look at, everybody's got a cell phone. Parents all have cell phones and email. So that's kind of our lineup. It's, it's a free resource versus a paid-for resource. The only, you know, the only advantage of using a remind is then you can directly tell the kids. Because it's tracked and we have, I mean, we can't have coaches directly texting the kids. It puts, it puts everybody in a bad spot. But with remind, then you can be texting every time you send a message to a kid, it goes to the parent and that. But at this point, cost-wise, it's not, it's not in our, our wheelhouse, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Public comment? Move on to consent agenda. So for reading under the lights, because that's on here, just to clarify, do we have like a time that we should be there to be?
We're going to start serving at 5:30.
So start serving at 5:30.
I'll make sure the meats over here caught. Okay, so what else are we serving?
I have all the chips in the library dropped off.
So we're just doing sandwich, chips and cookies?
Yep, and then Pepsi dropped off drinks.
Okay. So if we all just meet at 5 o'clock, we should be able to set it up and be ready.
I can be here at 5.
I can try to. And you have a special job or somebody designed it? Water truck.
Dave?
Yeah.
I could be here in like 5:02.
Write it down. Dave will be here 5:02.
He'll just be sitting outside the park.
So when I do the consent agenda, I just roll through this thing?
Did you show you? Did you use to? Huh?
Somebody did back in the day.
I remember doing it.
There used to be one.
So the consent agenda, A, B, and C are all together from what I understand.
Is there a board comment?
Yep, same thing.
Is there any board comment? I didn't have questions. I've been going to ask this for a couple of days and I keep forgetting. So when, when there's questions asked during the discussion, the questions are there, but there's never any answer to those questions.
A, B, and C.
There's, there's sometimes when I'm like, I really, so I was looking for what was the answer that I got.
I can't. Sometimes I'm just trying to keep up. This has been way better. This is the best meeting that I've probably just sat over here. Realistic, not. But yes, I can.
A lot of informational.
Yeah. And now you've got the recordings too.
But they're not formal.
No, but it'll be up for a year. But if you would like, I'll put the answer.
I mean, they don't have to be like crazy detail. Something to be like, oh, yeah, that's.
Can you tell how many people?
Still hanging on. So I was on the phone for the last minute. Received a bid to replace the sound system and the sound system. What did that cost?
So, yes, no, we received it. They did it at $13,000. So we, we never paid for it. So we're kind of the middleman in the deal.
So they pay stockman payable thing?
They will. 99% sure the president of Stockman Bank will be here 39 to present a general check.
What is food for SMP?
School nutrition program.
Thank you.
I had this tripled this way. School nutrition program. Oh, we didn't just update them on that. Pressured veggies. We do now have the pressured veggie program.
Back.
Back. Yeah, I wish that they would do all these things like in July, but they don't. So that's okay, but it's better late than never.
Then how does it work with activity reimbursement? Is it like, so often you, why is there an activity?
What are you looking at?
Uh, page seven, the bottom.
So the activity reimbursement, so so much of it comes on like our activity side. So when athletics drives and we have paper gas, it gets paper out of athletics and we cut a check that goes back against the fund side. Okay, so every month you'll see an activity paper reimbursement for those fees. Because they don't like us sending two checks, so we make one big check out of the fund side.
More curiosity sake, what's a censored diaper? It's for a toddler.
Okay, I'm going like.
Yeah.
You like to take it off.
I'm ready here.
Sure they can check the diapers.
I don't actually know how it works. I have to ask you that question.
What about time clock bridges?
So we had an issue with time clock. We were renewing the plan in November, but we don't have the licenses for this. So our time clock is going to use for all our classified staff substitutes. And our old contract with them have fewer licenses in the units. So we're now like cheaper to pay the whole bridges every month or quarter. And then we started new with them over the first.
Does anybody else have any other discussion? Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board discussion? Mike has moved to approve the consent agenda. TB has seconded it. Is there any public comment? We're coming? We're coming? TB has made the motion. Sorry, Mike has made the motion.
Mike has made the motion to approve the consent agenda. TB has seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion chances.
Obsolete books. Oh, obsolete.
Do you can ask a question?
I don't have any question. Yes. Stefan's job.
I forgot. I forgot my job.
Stefan's man, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mike has seconded it. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment?
Is there any board comment?
Mike's made a motion.
No. Stefan's made the motion.
Mike has seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye.